The June 11th Planning Board meeting to order. At this time, we're going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for disqualifications on any of the cases in front of us today. Okay, hearing none, we're moving on. There is a quorum met, seven out of seven. Way to go. And then we're going to go ahead and vote on approval of the agenda, tonight's agenda. Had a chance to look at it. I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Okay, on to item five, under the call to order. Approval of the minutes for our May 14th, 2024 meeting. At this time, if you've had a chance to go over the minutes, I'm going to open the floor for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a, we have a motion for approval. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, going, going on to old business. At the last meeting, we were presented with the Currituck County Planning Board Rules of Procedures. I believe this is a state requirement. It goes under the general rules, powers and duties of the planning board, appointment, terms, quorum and voting, et cetera, et cetera. And at this time, we're going to open, you know, for discussion by the board. But if we have no discussion, we will go ahead and vote to approve this and then I'll sign it at the end of the meeting. Hearing no discussion, do I have a motion? So we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to adopt the Planning Board Rules and Procedures, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Okay, moving on to new business. Case, the first case in front of us this evening is Planning Board 1307, University Park Elon. Request for an amendment to the University Park Elon Plan Development Mixed Use PD-M Master Plan Terms and Conditions to Allow 39 Townhomes at a Storage Building and Connect Amherst Drive to West Mobile Road. The parcel is located in Harbinger Tax Map 131, Parcel 97A, Poplar Branch Township. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board tonight. This is an amendment to already approved Plan Development Mixed Master Plan that was approved in 2013. Here is just kind of a zoomed out view to get you oriented to where the property is. I'm assuming that most in the room know where the property is. You can see to the north. Actually, I'm going to go to the podium. So I can use the mouse. All right. So here's the subject parcel. H2 Obayx Water Park is here. There's some industrial uses here. And then along this, this property to the south is West Mobile Road. And then zoomed in, you can see it a little bit more closely. You could see that there are already 39 townhomes in one phase of this development, as well as the commercial out front by the highway of Elon Vacations with some warehouse storage associated with that use. Here you can see the zoning districts of the subject property, as well as the surrounding areas. There's, you can see it abuts agriculture in the rear, GB along the highway across the street, as well as on either side of this parcel. This is really the reason that they're back here with this request. So if you recall, we have fairly recently adopted a new land use plan with a different future land use map. And so this area that was previously limited service on the prior map is now full, more full-service designation, with the G3 being for mixed-use centers and corridors. And because of this change to the land use plan, it allows the applicant to come back, as was the plan all along. If you read the terms and conditions, there was a statement in there that if, you know, the land use plan was amended, that they would be requesting additional density on the property. So you can see that with that land use plan amendment, now they have the piece in place in order to request the additional density on the, on the property. And here is the master plan that's showing the proposed townhomes. You can see these are the ones that are completed. The clubhouse and pool here on the plan. And you can see here, there's basically the same number of, there is, it is the same number of townhomes. There will be six buildings with six units and one building with three. You can see previously, there were six buildings with six units and one building with three units. They are also proposing here this, ooh, that's so cool. This 30 by 50 building, which is a storage building here. Another component of the plan that is a change is this connection of Amherst Drive all the way to West Mobile Road. So that's another change to the terms and conditions in the master plan. So speaking about that change of the land use plan to the G3 Mixed Use Centers and Corridors, this is directly from the land use plan that talks about that G3 classification. Supported by major transportation networks, public water and wastewater, and a community greenway, provides for a wide range of uses, including mixed residential subdivisions with a variety of housing, and mixed-use developments that maximize the efficient use of space. Attractive mixed-use development can be achieved by incentivizing multi-story buildings that comply with design standards that emphasize form, orientation and architecture. And you can see some of the appropriate land uses and development types in this transect of the land use plan are mixed residential developments, horizontal and vertical mixed-use development, and multifamily development, as well as office and institutional and some light industrial facilities. This request also, there are these goals and policies of the plan that may apply to this request. Land use goal one, you see a lot here about encouraging development to occur at densities appropriate for the location, considering these other factors that may relate to whether a property is appropriate for the proposed use. Land use policy 1.3, to consider community character and establish provisions. The infrastructure and county services policy about new growth be borne and inequitable proportion by those creating the additional demand. And then policy 3.1, that new development shall connect to the county's water system at the expense of the developer. Then there were also some actual implementation actions from the matrix of the land use plan that may apply to this request, which is Lower Currituck, Action 9, to promote mixed-use development that includes family entertainment and tourism-supporting businesses south of the water park in Lower Currituck. Lower Currituck, Action 10, promote the development of a mixed-use village. Whoop, that may not apply here in Grandy. That's not where we are. And then LC Act 11, encourage and consider incentives for development of a variety of housing. And so probably need to amend this consistency statement, given that that action is not really relevant here. The TRC does recommend approval of the request because it's consistent with the G3 transect of the Imagine Currituck Plan, including land use goal one, land use policy 1.3, and infrastructure and county services policies 1.1 and 3.1. And when the board does review and determine whether to approve or deny a zoning map amendment, it's important to adopt the statement of consistency and reasonableness. And staff has proposed the statement that the conditional zoning request is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the land use plan. It's compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the land. And it's reasonable and in the public interest because it will result in a logical and orderly development pattern and will not conflict with the public interest. And it's in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance. And at this point, I'll take any questions from the board related to the request.
Okay. Any questions for Jenny? Can, can you go to the original plat that we saw with the, right at the beginning?
The aerial?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right, the next one over, you just.
Oh, the, the actual plat of the master plan?
Right there, yeah, yeah. So what you've got, the new houses that are over there on the left, that's the new townhouses that are being proposed, right? So you've got a nice buffer. And then the, any single-family homes are going to be a little bit further over to the left.
The existing ones are here, yes.
And they're in agriculture at this time, so.
Except for the ones in the front that are GB.
Okay. So we've got a nice buffer here because we've, we've got septic tank lines, drain field, right? And then it looks like some vegetation. So it'll be a nice buffer between the townhomes and, and adjacent homes. Okay, that looks good. All right.
Phase three stays commercial?
Correct.
Any questions at all? Thanks. Okay, at this time, if you're signed up to speak to this case, just come forward and state your name and address. Anybody?
Do you want to hear from the applicant?
Yeah, if they would come forward, yeah, if they want.
Good evening. I'm Norman Bebo, and I'm the owner of the property.
Okay. And what's your address, Mr. Bebo?
136 Egeret Lane, Harbinger, North Carolina.
Okay, do you have anything to add to, to what Ms. Turner has said?
The initial development has been very successful. I think anytime that the county, actually, the county uses us as like a model for new developments because it is, it is a model. I mean, it's great. We have exactly what it was designed to do. We have teachers living there. We have police. We have firemen. We have no issues. And I don't know, we're real happy with it. There's a definite need for housing down here. I mean, people just don't have any place and they love our development, so, I mean. One of the things that we're trying to accomplish too, that I can let you know, is that, you know, we've got to bring in county water. And I'm fine with that because we had to do it in the initial phase. But one of the things that I'm trying to accomplish with this too is, you know, it's about the community. And I'm going to run the water all the way to Mobile Road so that the people on Mobile Road can then access county water, which they don't have the ability to do. I'm also probably the only development in Lower Currituck that has fiber internet. And I'm going to run the fiber out to Mobile Road as well so that those people can tie in. So, I mean, you know, it's not just, believe me, it's, it's not necessarily a moneymaker. Not at this point. But, you know, it's about community too, and we definitely need this.
Now, are the units for sale? Or do you just rent them?
No, just rentals.
You own them and rent them?
Year-round rentals. They're not short-term rentals, they're annual rentals.
Yeah. Because I never saw any type of indication that they were up for sale.
No.
They were being built, okay.
Yeah, and you don't even notice them from the highways.
No, they're tucked in there.
And you won't notice these either because, you know, on that map that you saw, you have phase three and four, I guess, which is the front. That's commercial. It's still going to be all trees. And then the townhomes will be behind that. And along Mobile Road, we intend to plant trees along there as kind of a buffer along the road, so.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Bebo? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the floor for any discussion from the board. Back to maybe Ms. Turner or none of ourselves. Pretty cut and dry? Okay, I'll open the floor for a motion. And we do have our cheat sheet, so.
I move to approve PB 13-07, University Park, Parents Elon, Parents PD-M Amendment because the request is consistent with the G3 transect of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one, land use policy 1.3, and infrastructure and county services policies 1.1 and 3.1. This conditional zoning request is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the land use plan, other applicable county adopted plans and the purposes of the UDO. Is compatible, and is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the land subject to the application, is the appropriate zoning district and uses for the land. It is reasonable and in the public interest because it would result in logical and orderly development pattern and would not conflict with the public interest and is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the UDO.
We have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion passes. Okay. Moving on. Number two, under new business, Planning Board 24-16, Walton and Ginger Morris, request for an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards and Chapter 10, Definitions, Definitions and Measurement to Increase the Number of Special Events from 4 to 10 and amend the definition of special events. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you again. It's a, I guess, a fairly straightforward text amendment application from the applicants. They have recently experienced, I would say, some success withholding these larger events at the farm that they operate. And this is maybe just another step in helping them determine whether they want to actually come back in the future and establish some sort of use where, where events may occur even more than the proposed 10 times a year. This is kind of a stepping stone to, to test. And the, it's, there was a prior text in the ordinance in 2013 and before that actually said that events were limited at 14 days a year. And that, for some reason, in 2013, as part of a Chamber of Commerce text amendment, that was stricken, and the four special events was put into place. So one reason why staff is supporting it is it's still consistent with what was previously in the ordinance. And, you know, 10 events is fewer than 14 days. Four events, it's kind of hard to put a timeframe on the length of an event. Whereas what the applicants are really looking to do is probably a day or something short. Others might be doing like Bike Week, which might last longer. And they may do a couple times a year. So we didn't propose a timeframe for how long an event could be. That's still kind of at the, at our discretion as to whether something's a special event or not. Something that would run for like 10 weeks, for example, it's probably a little bit more than a special event, so. But yeah, so this particular language in Chapter 4 is striking the four and adding 10. I'll let the applicants give you a little bit more background as to why they're sponsoring the text amendment, but that, that was kind of the general sense. And then here is the proposed definition of a special event. We didn't feel like it was very well defined previously. And so this is taken from Planning Dictionary, prior ordinance language, current ordinance language. And so we've crafted this definition of a special event as a planned temporary activity, unlike the customary or usual activities generally associated with the use of the property, intended to or likely to attract substantial crowds, and that may impact traffic or parking. Special events include but are not limited to sporting events, cultural events, musical events, charitable events, celebrations, festivals, fairs, carnivals, circuses, haunted houses, and communal camping. And staff does feel like it's consistent with the land use plan. There's land use goal two, to carefully consider design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses. Land use goal three, to support new and existing commercial developments that adhere to quality, community appearance and design standards. And economic development goal two, to promote sustainable tourism that improves quality of life for residents and preserves the natural and cultural resources of the county so that may, that they may continue to attract visitors to the area. And staff does recommend approval of the request, subject to this suggested consistency statement, that the requested text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goals two and three, and economic development goal two. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has. I will leave for you. You've seen these standards, you see these regularly. These are the text amendment review standards that the board may consider when making a decision whether to approve or deny the request.
Any questions for staff? None at all?
I don't know if the question's for you, Jenny, or not. Those things that were listed of the uses, have all of them been done already there?
No. You mean on, on the farm?
Yeah, right.
Just in the county.
That's county-wise.
Right. They're, they're actually taken, some of those uses are listed in Chapter 4, where it talks about special events. And it just made sense to actually define a special event as what it actually is, so.
Hearing no more questions. At this time, if the applicant would like to come and speak, or anyone else representing the applicant, just state your name and address.
How are y'all? I'm Chet Morris, 106 Morris Landing Lane. Obviously, I'm her son.
I'm Ginger Morris, 3784 Currituck Highway. I hope most of y'all know who we are and know the business. We've been in business for 41 years. I moved to the county in 1980. Walton Morris is my husband. He was born and raised here. As you know, the Morris goes back 300 years in this county with our market. We started by growing sweet corn. You know, crop farming was not really something that was really strong. And we decided to get out of farming corn, soybean and wheat in the 80s because the market was just not there. The prices were not conducive, or conducive to really being a way of living that we felt like we wanted to go. So we started growing our own crops. And we tried doing the tomatoes, cantaloupe, the whole nine yards. We wholesaled. I kind of grew up in the grocery store business with my dad. So I kind of knew people that were in the tidewater area so that we can market those things. Long story short, that didn't work because we don't have a lot of territory in our Currituck, except for south, or south to north. We don't have any depth. And we didn't really have the labor force that we really needed to be able to, to do that well. And so we started using our neighbor friends from Edenton. They needed an avenue to sell their produce. We needed someone to grow it. We had the market, they had the product. So it really was a wonderful system that we had worked. Farming has totally changed. Everything's hydrocooled, which given you a little bit of education that you probably don't really need, but just to see where the, where it has evolved. There's so many more techniques that they do with crop farming. Your corn is thrown in ice baths to get that, the field heat out of it so that it doesn't die within 24 hours and turns to starch. So, you know, it's so, everybody's like, it would be so nice if everybody could grow everything. But where agriculture is just a little bit different than it used to be in 1980. So with that being said, we were just given, everything that we've done has been pretty much a cause and effect. We needed a little bit more space, and a little bit more space, and a little bit more space. Who would have ever known we would be what we are today, 41 years later? I was 23, and my husband was 26 when we started this market. And we also headed the greenhouse business. So anyway, the evolution of where we are, I feel like if there's a cause, we've always tried to create. When you see things happening, as a good business would do, you see its success, you try to grow in that area a little bit more and more. We started out with one gentleman that came into one of the buildings that we had that was really not used for anything and was singing, and people just loved it. And North Carolina agriculture has really gotten big, especially when they got rid of tobacco. They were trying to find other things that farmers could do that would sustain their livelihood on the farm. So they really promoted wine and beer. His craft beers have really become very popular. And it's amazing, we even work with Back Bay. And Chet could tell you anything you want to know about that. So we really utilize a lot of North Carolina ag products, even though it is, it's major, what we have here. We did Fun on the Farm for years. COVID kind of kicked that back, which was kind of a nice thing because it had gotten so big. We were kind of like, this is getting kind of overwhelming. But I don't know if any of y'all have ever been there on an event like that, letting Oliver Anthony come into the market. If we couldn't handle, if we handled that properly, we can handle anything. We had two days to prepare for him. He was nobody. And he got on TikTok and he got to number one, I believe, in like two days. They said, they warned us we could have 10,000 people at our market. It was, it was toes to toes with people. We've been doing this, like I said, we've done field trips. We're very organized. We're very cautious, don't want anybody to get hurt on the farm. We're definitely a service industry. We even have our restaurants where we maintain them. We, we spend a lot of money on creating that service industry for people. So I do feel like we're a special place. With Anthony, Oliver Anthony coming, we had, after he had left, Nashville started calling. And what's his name? Jones? Jamie Johnson.
Jamie Johnson.
Jamie Johnson hits come in. I don't know if y'all know country music. But anyway, he had popped in, flew into the airport and came in, stepped in, and promoted Oliver Anthony. And then, you know, they stayed, and then he went on. The airport has been a blessing to us because it's right around the corner. We've been told that people fly in here honestly just to come to Currituck. They either go to Currituck Barbecue, the Frog Island, come to our place, and they can fly back. I can't imagine. But that's what we were told by the airport. And Chet, if you wanted to describe some of these other things, like the airport.
So I talked to William. He's the manager at the airport. And him and Cameron Lowe, they came to us probably a month ago because they do the crops and props, or crops and props, I guess, they're doing a collaborative event. And he was asking me really for advice on how to run a show because we have done everything so well. And maybe eventually be in a collaborative event, doing something. And I told him, she's always wanted an airshow at the market. And he said that they can't do an actual airshow just because of the ordinances as far as you've got to be so far from housing and everything else. But we own the woods and the field and the swamp all the way to the airport. So what they could do, you know, they could fly, they could take off and land at the airport. They could fly over our property away from the, away from the crowds. And that's something we really want to do. But what would happen is that being done would be on our property. So we're the ones that have to take out a special event permit. And it's really for the county. It's not a huge moneymaker for us. But it's anything like that the county might want to do, or if somebody wants to put a big wedding, if somebody big wants to come and have a wedding on the farm, it's not a big moneymaker for us. But we're limited to four events, so I can't let them do that because I have to use those four events to help pay for what we've built and try and bring in some revenue to pay, you know, employees and everything that we've done. It costs a lot of money to put every event on. But the biggest reason we're asking for 10 is strictly because we can't put 10 events on physically and run the market by ourselves. So it's basically so, just like music, all the Live Nation, you know, every, Live Nation's the biggest, one of the biggest music companies in the world. Well, they have like a 20-year contract with the amphitheater in Norfolk. Well, the city builds the amphitheater, the, the state-built Roanoke Island Festival. People rent the venues out. It's not music that owns the place. They rent the venues out, just like the Corolla, the Heritage. They rent the venues out, just like the Corolla, the Heritage Park. If you want to rent it out for something, you can do that. But if they rent it out, I don't have enough special event permits. And special event permits are fairly easy to get, and I don't want to do so many of them. So it's right now the best way to do it versus trying to change our overlay of what our property is and everything else is just to extend, being able to get like 10 event permits in case we have people that come on our property, want to do something with our help, you know, that they would be allowed to do that. And I talked to William again today, and he said that three people, three people flew in because they've got the courtesy vehicles at the airport. And three people flew in just to come to the market today and shop, hang out, and go back. He can't tell me where they're from or what they do, but he said every day. And on the weekend, he'll have 10 or 15 people fly in just to come hang out and then go back. So that was shocking to me. And that kind of tells you the, being the airport is right there of how helpful that is to the whole getting people here. He says celebrities come in that you don't even know about all the time. And like all these, all these big Nashville people that want to come in, when we tell them the airport is four minutes from our property, we can pick them up on their private jet right there, escort them in. You're talking about big people coming. Like this next band that we've got coming on the 21st, the drummer has to be flown in and flown out of Norfolk. Well, instead of us going to get him, our hospitality woman lives in, where she was talking about, in Maple Land or the airport road there with a hangar, a private plane, he's going to pick them up in his private plane from Norfolk, hop them on his plane and bring them right to Maple. You know, so this whole thing, it's not about just, just us, it's about everything that comes through that whole area, especially with the airport, and bringing more people through there. And when we tell them they have fuel and big enough airport to bring in these big jets that these people have, you know, they're like, that is way better than having to come in or tour or get on a tour bus, you know, and come 1,000 miles or whatever it is, when they could just fly their big jets right in and we have, we provide all the production. And it's not all just concerts. You know, you've got big car shows or anything you really want to do out there. We've always done our hay rides and that kind of stuff. And that's going to take place in the new, I guess, park that we built. And really, it's just about what we can't handle and somebody wants to come in, if the county wants to do something at our place, I want to be able to have an extra permit, you know, to be able to give that to them, to be able to do that. Because we've built a festival park that the county didn't have to and opened to work with the county, you know, it's just, it's a cool thing. So we've just got to have more dates.
This has kind of just evolved in our life. But I knew three, four years ago that somebody could walk through our door and want what we have because it is organic. It is created by itself. It's not something that we did. And it is an event farm. And that's why Moayoc and Chesapeake love coming down here. And I don't know if you've ever been to our place, we have a crowd, Land Sharks were there. I mean, people just can't believe, even the locals just can't believe the home feeling. You feel like you're stepping back in time. You feel safe, the kids can run around. It's just, it's just, there's not a better word than organic. It's just natural. It's nothing that we have pushed. I do, I know that we're voting on the number of events that were allowed, but I just want you to know that our goal is to be able to take this land that we are so blessed to have, and we want to keep it agriculture. It's to our advantage to keep this in agriculture as far as the whole appearance, the whole feeling of it. We don't want to be looking like a city. We don't want the city to come to the city. We want them to come to Currituck. We get, we have a tremendous following all the way from Hampton, Virginia Beach that come, we've got people that come every weekend because of the music that we have every weekend on our property. Just to let y'all know, I just, I just feel like it is something that has just fallen in our lap and we definitely want to do this right.
Okay. Any questions for the Morris family?
I'm glad you guys were open until December the 9th. Did that work out okay? Because it was the first year, wasn't it, this year that you were open?
The window's getting shorter and shorter to recoup though.
Yeah.
This was my day off. The past three weeks on my day off, I work. You know what I'm saying? With work, what have you. So we, we love being a seasonal business because you can recoup in the wintertime. As long as I have help and we have been able, that's another thing that Chet was trying to do too, because we've got three or four people that are basically full timers. They're pulling the hours.
They need a lot more.
They're pulling the hours in the time that we're open to sacrifice, to be able, and Tony, you know, he was EMS and he's a little bit of jack of all trades, but they got to go find something else to do. So this gives us some revenue also if we can get enough to be able to pay for these people. It's not about how much we bank, it's how much can we leave behind? How much can we do? That's my goal in life.
What, what type of events did you have? I, I want to go out and see it now. I haven't been there.
You've never been there?
Oh.
So our first concert was May 17th, and that was Craig Morgan and Chase Beckham. I don't know if you know Craig Morgan, he was 90s, big, big time country. He actually brought his Grand Ole Opry mic. There's only three in the world, he's got one of them. This next one's on June 21st with Chase, not Chase Beckham, Jared Neiman and Canaan Smith. And y'all know the ones that are coming August 9th is the Marshall Tucker Band.
Oh, these smokes, really.
I'm beside myself on that one.
So, haven't, haven't released it yet, trying to see who's coming with them August 9th.
Yeah. And it's really cool. I don't know if you saw anything on Facebook. I mean, Chet does, Tony posts an awful lot, you know, to get everybody to see what it's like. That is, we do that on Friday nights because we don't want to interfere with our Saturdays and Sundays because that's our livelihood. Plus it's five o'clock at night. That's one thing that we're really good, we're not in the busyness of Moayoc and not down in Brandy. We've got the Water Bay across from us, we've got Swampland on the west of us, Family on the north of us, Barco Road is about the busiest other than the airport housing. So it's really great for the traffic. The Sheriff's Department said they could have everybody out with Craig Morgan in 20 minutes.
That was the biggest concern with the community is backup traffic. Because nobody, nobody that's, people that's not even been there, all they see is another concert venue or something. And you know, they're saying it's going to kill traffic. I mean, you'll be asleep by the time the show ends, you know. And so that was Jesse Taylor. He was, he was the head of the law enforcement on this last one. Our goal was at the end of the last song, we had 2,500 people there. In the future, we're looking at around 5,000 because that's what I'm comfortable with parking, is a big enough place to hold 20,000. But I know that I can't comfortably park more than that unless it's super dry like it is right now, you know, to where we can open up more tickets, say Marshall Tucker sold out. It had 5,000 the week prior, there was zero rain. Not worried about, you know, the fields, just like Dennis Anderson does, just kind of mow the fields down, then we can get there. But with the, with the Craig Morgan, that was our goal, was last song, just because normally a lot of times right after the last song, you try and let people like buy some merchandise, t-shirts, sweatshirts, that kind of thing. But we wanted everybody out just to see timeframe. It's all, it's all, you know, learning curve. So after the last song to the last car in the parking lot was 20 minutes. And that was the biggest positive impact that everybody said was, you know, I've go to the amphitheater or somewhere like that and if I park up close, you know, you're an hour and a half getting out of there. And then you got to get on the back roads coming to Currituck with no shoulders and ditches, you know, in the middle, middle of night with, you know, bears and deers and everything else crossing. So that's, we've got a lot going for us. We've just got to be able to pull from other places if we don't know exactly who wants to come. But we're trying, we've got to get a couple of big names in. You know, we've got this next one, and I haven't done a fourth show just because I don't want to waste my last fourth permit on something that's not going to be good when I could get somebody like, you know, Jamie Johnson's coming to Roanoke Island, but just say Jamie Johnson said at the last minute, hey, I want to stop there. Well, now I can't do it because I'm not, I don't have a fifth permit. So I'm really struggling with who, who and what I'm going to do. We might not do a concert for the fourth, we might just do like a big type car show or bring back the Fall Festival and make it a daytime thing. But because it's not my general everyday thing, I've got to get a permit for that day to do that. And it's, you know, it's less risk than a concert is, but it's my fourth permit. And I've got sponsors and I've told them, you've got four, you know, you've got four shows that you'll be seeing the big sponsors, so you've got to fill those slots. And then we would work out in the future with sponsors on that, on that kind of stuff as far as how it works. But the biggest thing is just need more than four.
Y'all have put Currituck on the map because I've got cousins up in Virginia Beach and up there and they, they come down all the time now.
Well, we've got people from Suffolk, they come every Sunday. I mean Suffolk, I've talked to people that come from DC for a day trip. You can't get a Currituck boy to go to Virginia on a day trip for nothing during the weekend, I can promise you. But, you know, they're used to the traffic and they're like, it's no big deal. You get to look at the countryside the whole way down here. It's not like us leaving this to go to the city and being angry and just can't wait to get out of there. They can't, they want, they want to stay here.
Yeah.
You know, so.
They've done two ads with Wavy, or with Wavy TV 10. Our biggest thing that we're having to learn is Chesapeake is screaming for us. I mean, serious. I mean, one of the girls was, that lives up there, she had called me to ask a question and she's like, everybody's talking about it. But we don't quite know how to tap in to get, just like Currituck, how do you get it out there? How do you promote it? So these are the learning curves and who to get, you know, this next concert might not be as strong as the Craig. So we're learning, what is it that people want? So a little bit of feelers, but we're also learning, if you want it, you got to fork out the money to get these people here. So that's a big expense on us. So we would definitely want everything to be without hesitation or what we're doing. But it is a learning tool as far as that. And I will tell you, you need to come out on Sundays afternoon. We always have a tremendous band. It could be local, they could be from Nashville. We have it on Facebook who's playing and get a feel of the market.
Brian has a question.
I'd like to make just a comment if I may. I'm an, I feel somewhat entitled to make a comment here because I'm almost next door neighbor to you. And I've, I've enjoyed watching the facility grow over the past few years. And I was most impressed just recently at your last event, I happened to be passing and the traffic, as you've mentioned, was very, very heavy. And looking over to see what was going on, my reaction was, these folks have their act together to see how well the traffic was being taken off the road and escorted back onto the road. It was really a very efficient operation that you're running. And I think it's a great idea. I wish you every success.
Next thing, we need a stoplight.
I'm almost, I'm almost as close as the field. I've got a ringside seat, so I get a free ticket sometimes.
You mentioned in our meeting, what we really need is a pull-off on the, I don't know how they have been coming into the market, Swordhawk, because that's if they're locked up on the road, where if you have a little bit of that third lane pull-off, it gets everybody off the road.
You could certainly contact the OT and see if you can, if they would permit that for you.
That, that made more sense than anything I could think of doing. Yeah.
I love the market. I love, I just, I could, I take, it's a, it's a field trip for my family when they come and visit.
I can handle 5,000 people. I can't handle seven or eight looking at me.
I like, I like some of the opening acts as much as the big. I'm, I'm an older guy, so you know, I like, I like the smaller.
Yeah.
There was a guy you had that sounded like four people were on that stage and it was only one guy.
We got a, we got a rock hairband, older guys coming this Sunday. She's seen one, it was a recommendation by Dennis Anderson. And, and we booked him without even really looking at him. And then we got to looking at him and I was like, oh my gosh, what have we done? And they were great. They were, they were fantastic. They're from Pennsylvania and they put on a heck of a show. I mean, they do all kinds of old, old rock. And Dad, he was like, I ain't having rock up here. And half the ones that they were singing, he was like, I love that song. I didn't know they played that song, you know, so.
Yeah, y'all had a good reggae band opening for the Landshark, Jimmy Buffett cover band. That was a nice reggae band.
Wonderland?
Wonderland.
Yeah.
They're from Virginia Beach, that girl, she, she rocks, she's good.
Yeah.
And that's kind of, might be my fourth show we're thinking about is, is the Jimmy Buffett thing. So everything's, it's happened, not necessarily because we wanted to happen, it's, they, they come to us and it's fallen in our lap, in our lap like Oliver Anthony. And then the year prior to Jimmy Buffett dying, Tony, my music guy, he, he called Jimmy's biggest, biggest band, you know, that is in Key West, that is a Jimmy Buffett tribute band. He called him, they wanted him here. And that was the, the Landsharks. And they're, they're from Key West. And then Jimmy Buffett died. And then we were the first person they called and said, we've got a gig in Winston-Salem. We can, it's, it looks like it's three hours and we're going to hop right over.
Looks like.
Huh?
Winston-Salem.
Winston-Salem, yeah. And it's, he said, we can do that and then we can haul tail from there right to Norfolk. You know, so we were the first people to got Jimmy Buffett's tribute band after he passed away. So it's like, stuff like that has fallen in place. I'm not a huge concert person. I tell everybody, I don't even go to big concerts. And when I tell them that and they see what we've built, they say, I can't imagine what you could do if you actually wore a concert goer. We just know what it takes to be, it's all about safety, safety and good music and good food and drinks and can't go wrong.
All right. Any more questions for, for the applicant? Any discussion between the board members? All right, hearing none, I'm going to open the floor for a motion. And we have the cheat sheet.
Chairman, did you open it up for public comment?
No.
Uh, no, I did not. I'm sorry. I thought I did when I asked them to come forward. I thought, well, I just called the applicant.
Well, for the applicant, yeah, I'm not sure if there's another gentleman here, I don't know if he was planning.
I'm sorry, if anyone has signed up to speak to the case, the public come forward. Okay.
All right, we're good.
All right. Thank you for keeping me straight. All right. All right. There's no discussion between board members, I'm going to open the floor for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the PB 24-16 Walton-Ninja Morris text amendment because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan and the UDO, including the land use goals two, three, and economic development goal two.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Oh, sorry.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. All right, motion passes. Okay, that takes care of our cases. I'm moving on.